This meeting of the December 13th, 2021 Board of Education is called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone present and those viewing this meeting. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We are very pleased you've taken the time to join us. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We are honored tonight to have the East High School JROTC cadets Madison Fowler, Mackenzie Beisel, Carol Laura -- I'm going to say that one more time to make sure your mom hears that correctly -- Carol Laura, and Nate Doe. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Colors, halt. Left, face. Please, ma'am, arms. Ma'am, the question is to post the flag.
You may post the colors.
Order, arms. Pose. Please, ma'am, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, arms. Dismissed.
Thank you, East High JROTC. We appreciate you. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under Reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Welcome to the Board of Education.
Hello, my name is Carlos Sosa. I'm a senior at South High.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Mejia, and I'm a junior at South High.
So just a little bit about what we did the last meeting. We got the privilege to make, what was it, crisis bags, I believe is what the title was. We got to put teddy bears together along with some books for children who are -- or for first responders who respond to children who were in a time of crisis. Along with that, we also got to, I believe, make some blankets and basically got to bond together as a district, you know, as a community. And then it brought a sense of humility to me, and I know my peers as well, to be able to sit down and do something for someone else. And that's kind of one of the reasons I look forward to Super SAC and things. It's -- I'm not speaking for myself. I want to speak for those around me. And take a letter.
So this past meeting, we got to put together crisis bags for first responders who respond to any accidents where children are present and make them feel like they're safe and have something to take away from the situation that's positive. While we were creating these care packages, we not only got to bond as a group, but I also believe that it makes us realize how much of an opportunity we have to get to put these bags together. Not only because we're also part of Super SAC and making an impact for people who aren't probably in the best times as we are, but also makes us be grateful where we're standing in life right now and being able to not only be part of Super SAC and contribute back to the community, but also be going to school in a good district.
So our testimonies are pretty brief, so we'd like to open up for any questions you guys may have, if you guys would like to ask.
Any questions from the board? Carlos and Melissa, I'd like to say we are also grateful for students like you, and that's why we work as hard as we'd like to think we work, and we appreciate everything you do for us as well. So please tell all your other members of Super SAC that we appreciate them and we're also grateful for them. Dr. Thompson?
They forgot to tell you what wonderful singers they are.
Ah.
We had an awesome time singing Christmas carols, so I ended up being the DJ. So they requested all the songs, and then I had to go find them, and then we had a good time singing them as we were doing our community service. So again, they missed the most important part, and that was their voices.
I thought maybe they were going to do a solo right now for us.
They could.
We'll have anything prepared or something.
Thank you so much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Good News, Facilities Division Customer Service Award.
Well, excuse me, good evening, board members. Superintendent Thompson, we have two Good News items to share with you. And before we invite Luke forward with his visual effects, which are pretty doggone cool, I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge all of the really cool banners that you would have seen on the graphics when you came in. And if you didn't have the opportunity, we might be able to run that again at the end of the meeting as you're leaving. If you have the opportunity, drive down Douglas, downtown Douglas. There are banners on the light poles that our fourth grade students from across the Wichita Public Schools had the chance to submit design ideas for. And Sean Chastain has been working with the Wichita Downtown Development folks since early this spring to create a really cool and very visible opportunity for students to intersect art and community. And it just warms my heart. I drove down Douglas yesterday when I was coming home from a meeting downtown just so I could see the banners. So I would encourage you to do that and think about the commitment and the connection that arts and our community plays for our students each day. The second thing before we introduce our Good News items is to acknowledge and honor and say thank you to Ben Blankley, Ron Rosales, and Mia Turner, who enjoy their last evening of Good News with us tonight as seated board members and who conclude their terms of service on the Wichita Board of Education. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of a grateful school, community, to all three of you for your service and invite you, if you choose to say a few words to do so, but more than anything, to acknowledge for those who are watching the meeting live and who may watch it after the fact, the amazing service that you contribute to the Wichita Public Schools for the mighty salary of zero dollars. I think honestly, most folks in our community don't have any idea that you all serve dozens, if not hundreds, of hours every month, and there is no compensation for service to the Board of Education. And that is really, when you think about servant leadership and commitment to community, it's really extraordinary what you all do to serve and support our kids. So as I said, on behalf of a grateful school district and a grateful community, I want to say thank you to all of you and invite my colleagues to join me in a round of applause for the three of you as you conclude your board service.
Julie?
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank Ron and Ben and Mia. I've truly enjoyed serving on the Board of Education with you. I do know how many hours you put into this and your dedication and devotion, and we've worked together as a great team, and I appreciate the three of you and the great team members that you've been with us. And first and foremost, I want to say I never questioned ever with any of you your complete and total dedication to the kids of this district. And so I want to say thank you to you. I'm sad you're leaving us. I'm going to miss you, but thank you for your service to the kids of Wichita Public Schools.
Ernestine?
I too want to say thank you. Thank you, Mia. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ron. It's amazing because I know that school districts around the nation, they get paid for it, and we do it for nothing, but you guys have really stretched beyond. Ron, you really have been, just I said earlier, the Swiss knife of the school board, that you're available to just about any kind of research or any kind of idea. And with your whole life, you are kid decorated -- decorated, kid dedicated, and we really appreciate that. And we know that you're going to keep on being kid dedicated, maybe decorated too.
That's true.
So I look forward to watching your life as it goes on from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Ben? You've been not only the good parent that kept us grounded, but you've also been the one that has always reminded us that we're here to change the world, to make sure that the education we're giving is the best ever. And you keep on doing that for us from the citizen land, and I know that you're going to have a great career as you go forward, making the world a better place. Mia, you've always been one that speaks for those who cannot speak for themselves. You also reach out and quietly correct us if we forget something or if we're headed. You just kind of quietly say, well, this is kind of what I thought, and it stops us to think. And you've just been really wonderful. I appreciate -- keep on speaking for those who cannot speak for themselves. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernestine. Cheryl?
Well, I just want to echo what my other board members have said. I've been on the board quite a while, and honestly and truly, with the board that we have right now, we have accomplished so much and taken so much heat, but still come back and watched exactly what we should, and that is what's right for kids. And Ron and Ben and Mia, you have been superstars in making sure that we never forget it's about the kids. Whatever we're doing, we always focus on them, and I am greatly, greatly going to miss all three of you. Thank you very much for your service.
And I think I'm going to, during my Board of Education remarks at the end, I think I'm going to kind of give you my thoughts on that at the end of the meeting. That way I don't get too emotional at the start. But Ben, Ron, or Mia, is there anything you'd like to say at this time? Mia?
I just want to thank you all. You all were very welcoming to us. You never made me feel like you don't know what's going on, so you don't have an opinion. And I want to say congratulations to the new members that are coming in, and I wish them the best. But I just wanted you all to know, everybody to know, I'll still be serving, just in a smaller capacity, so I won't stop serving. And thank you again for all your help. You guys are some magnificent people.
And Mia?
Just outside the board, you guys have reached out. You all have been fantastic, so thank you.
And Mia, it won't even be a smaller capacity. It'll just be a different one.
Yep. Yes.
Ben?
Sure. So it's been a heck of a four years.
Say that again.
Yeah, you know, when we started this job, the -- a former board member once said that boundary changes were the hardest thing that a Board of Education would ever have to tackle. And we haven't done one of those. So yeah, it's been extremely rewarding four years. I'm glad to have been what I think in the right place at the right time, making some tough decisions on behalf of our entire community. And I'm really happy and I'm really proud of the work that we achieved together.
Thank you, Ben. Ron?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody. And again, you know, the leadership that's displayed here from all the different aspects of all the things that go into education is represented here, and along with the, of course, the parents especially, to make sure that your kids get to school and do what they need to do. And the students, you know, again, I still teach, and I appreciate all my students, and I see the ones that were here and see some out in the audience, but really still encouraged to see them still being active and doing what they need to do, doing the right things, contributing to society. And I think a lot of that has to do with the leadership in this room right here. And it's been an honor to represent -- this building is where I graduated from, and I really reflect on that. It's been an honor to, you know, communicate and engage with some of the people here and throughout all the other feeder elementaries that not only through North High, but Heights and Northeast Magnet. Again, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ron.
As I mentioned a moment ago, we have two Good News items to share with you tonight. The first is to celebrate customer service, and it's a little bit of a different twist. Through our work with the four disciplines of execution and the focus on our strategic plan, our Facilities Division has created an opportunity to recognize customer service provided by the various departments at the Service Center to our buildings, knowing how important it is that those of us that work in central office support our schools in the manners in which they need to be supported. So here to tell you more about the really cool trophy and the recognition opportunity that the School Service Center has created is Luke Newman, our Division Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Wendy. She said, my name is Luke Newman. I'm the Director of Facilities, and tonight I have the honor of presenting our inaugural Facilities Division Customer Service Award recipient. So this award was created to encourage and recognize high-performing departments with demonstrated excellence in communication, initiative, problem-solving, and leadership. Customer service is such a huge part of what we do in the Facilities Division and directly correlates to long-term goal number four of the strategic plan, which is ensuring that schools are trusted as safe places. We created this award to promote a culture of customer service and highlight the top-performing teams in facilities. The trophy before you was constructed in-house by our Millings Electrical and Sign Shops and will be awarded to one team recipient in the Facilities Division each semester. The selection committee evaluated feedback received from our schools for all 21 shops and departments, and I'm excited to announce that the Custodial Department rose to the top for their many critical initiatives successfully implemented in the 2021 school year, which required outside-the-box thinking, swift action, and strong proactive communication. Our Custodial Manager, Albert Jackson, is here tonight to represent the department. Albert, if you wouldn't mind standing up waving. Thank you, Albert. And that takes care of my last point, which was to ask you to help me in congratulating them on their much-deserved win. So thank you for clapping. One more time, if you wouldn't mind joining me in a round of applause. Good job. Any questions on what we're doing with this? It's been a fun thing for our division and to see people get excited about it. And as you can see, there's pictures that rotate through the front of the award and some comments that we receive from our schools. So it's kind of a neat thing to be able to rotate through facilities and for people to be able to proudly display in their departments, so.
Ernestine?
I want to know where you're going to put that right away. Is it going to be where the custodians can see it and where the public can see it?
It's been sitting in the Custodial Department out at the Service Center for the last probably five or six months. I'm a little delayed in presenting this to the board. But yeah, they've been...
So they know?
Yep.
They know they got it. All right. Okay, thank you.
Julie?
I think this is super cool. Our Facilities Division, they're just rock stars as far as great customer service, and I think this is just a really nice way to highlight that and to share the love. So thank you to whoever it was that thought of this. And of course, the trophy itself is -- it shows how talented your team is and their great imagination and skill. So thank you to Luke. Thank you to the Custodial Department and all of the Facilities Division for your great work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Our final Good News item tonight is as good as it gets. As Amanda Kingry, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, comes forward, it's also my pleasure to invite the eight young people, currently seniors in our schools, to come forward, and these young people are being recognized as 2022 National Merit semifinalists. These students represent the best of the best in our district and in our country. So as they come forward -- come on, Kim. Come on. You will have a chance to meet them and hear a little bit more from Ms. Kingry about these phenomenal students. You guys, go ahead and come on over here. Without further ado.
All right. Good evening. So I have the honor of recognizing these students. And so when we get to the part where I call your name, if you will step forward or at least wave so we know who each of you are. So we are here to recognize the National Merit Scholarship Program, who has named eight semifinalists from the Wichita Public Schools. The 2022 semifinalists are East High students Miles Crawford, Molly Ha, not here, okay, Vivian Lu, Eva Mackenzie, Samuel Morris, Varun Verma. And those are our East High students. We have Heights -- go ahead. We have Heights High School student, Toller Phipps. And Northeast Magnet High School student, Alexander Gleason. So if we can give a round of applause for all of our students. So how this occurred, so high school juniors entered the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2020 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of the U.S. high school seniors -- I'm going to say that again. They represent less than 1% of our high school seniors across the nation. And this includes having the highest scoring entrance in each of our states. So they are in the top of our state. So again, congratulations to you guys. This is a huge, huge honor. We are very proud of you. So one more round of applause. Congratulations, guys. And before they walk away, we also want to recognize the parents and the family that are here today because we know that it takes support of our families for them to be as successful as they are. So if you guys could please stand. And one more group that we would like to recognize, any administrator or anybody from the staff from their buildings, if you guys could please stand. So we're open for comments or questions?
And I'm going to anticipate Julie's question. I think we have a tradition where we embarrass you and make you come to the podium, state your name again, and I know you get asked three trillion times a day, but kind of what your plans after high school are.
Stand anticipated, but then I want to make a comment.
Absolutely.
As well.
Absolutely.
Yes, please. One at a time. We're putting you on the spot. And tell us your future plans and goals. Where are you going to go to school? What do you want to study?
So I'm Alex Gleason from Northeast. I haven't quite decided on what college I'm going to, but wherever I'm going to be, I'm going to be studying astrophysics.
Oh, nice.
Go ahead and stay up there.
My name is Vivian Lu, and I also do not know what college I'm going to yet. Hopefully, some of my early decisions will come out soon, and I am planning to study aerospace engineering.
Awesome.
My name is Toller Phipps. I go to Wichita Heights High School. I want to say what an honor it is to accept this award and represent my school, so thank you guys for that. And I also have not decided on a college. A lot of my application decisions were based off if I got this or not. So now that I have this, I'm looking a final eyes. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Varun Verma. I'm a senior at Wichita East High School, and I'm planning on studying business and computer science at a school that's yet undecided, but thank you all for the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Eva Mackenzie. I go to Wichita East High School. I'm still waiting on my early decision school, as well as some others, before deciding where I'm going to college, but I hope to be studying biomedical engineering or orthodontics.
My name is Miles Crawford from East High School, and I'm going to be studying materials and metallurgical engineering at the Colorado School of Mines.
Excellent.
Hello, my name's Sam Morris, and I will be studying mechanical engineering at an undecided college.
I want you to all anticipate the scholarships coming in. That goes hand in hand with being a National Merit Scholar. I happen to have a National Merit Scholar in my family, and she completed her entire education through receiving a PhD from Northwestern and didn't pay one single penny her entire career, college career. So hang in there. Money will be coming your way.
Thank you, Julie. Ben?
So I was a 2001 National Merit semifinalist and went to college and studied engineering. So those of you that have engineering in your plans, hopefully you'll be a little cooler than me, but I understand if you're just as nerdy.
Cheryl?
I just want to say congratulations, first of all, to all of you. It is a tremendous honor to be recognized as a National Merit Scholar. And it's not only an honor for you, it's an honor for our district to have this many National Merit Scholars in our district, and it speaks to the quality of the education that our students receive. You are going to -- I'm not a bit surprised that you haven't decided what schools you're going to yet because this will change the opportunities greatly for each of you. So big decisions for you and your family are ahead, and I'm sure when we recognize our scholarship winners in the spring, you're going to all be among them with the highest amounts. So congratulations. We are so proud to have you as part of our district. Thank you. We are so proud to have you as part of our district. Thank you.
Outstanding. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see Mr. Freeman here tonight, so we'll go to the next item. Oh, sorry. Yes. Next item is UTW.
Yes. Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Britten Lewis.
Yes, Britten Lewis, President of United Teachers of Wichita. And they just left the room. But Carlos and Melissa and these National Merit Scholars are the reason we are all here. And it's fantastic to see them bring their talents and, and their voice here. Well, we are here tonight to express our gratitude for the volunteer service you all provide to Wichita Public Schools on behalf of our Wichita community. These are often thankless positions, and you can never please everyone, even during normal times. Your courage and commitment to make tough decisions and do what you believe right for our students and staff during an unprecedented pandemic crisis is commendable. Vice President Blankley, thank you for being thoughtful and caring about the students and staff of 259 when facing the difficult challenges of a large school system. Your leadership in finding practical solutions for complex problems has been valuable. Mr. Rosales, thank you for being a strong, steady advocate for our students and staff of color and for always speaking up for the needs of English as a Second Language learners in our schools. You have also been a consistent voice in support of student involvement in athletics and other extracurricular activities for a greater connection to our school communities. Ms. Turner, thank you for bringing a voice for the students who often fly under the radar of the many special programs that command a lot of attention in our school system. You have shared your personal and family experiences within our schools and have highlighted the needs of all students in a clear and effective manner. Dr. Thompson and all members of the board, thank you for remaining steady during turbulent times. It has felt like the weight of the world has fallen on the shoulders of the schools and our community as we have many challenges to work through in hopes of emerging from this pandemic someday. Your leadership will be key to our success. Now, schools are one of the safest places a person could be in the United States. And we all agree that everyone should feel safe in school. And now, the widespread pain and disruption this pandemic has caused families in the Wichita community arrive at our doors with the students we serve every day. As educators, we empathize with the struggles students face in their lives and value personal connection as crucial to being effective in the work that we do. Teachers have a lot on our plates. We care about our students and do everything we can to show that within a productive learning environment. We are doing our best to deal with the upheaval this pandemic has created in our students' lives. There are limits to how much classroom teachers can meet their needs beyond providing a quality education and a productive learning environment. We also want to recognize the monumental tasks that billing administrators are working through and appreciate all the support they can provide to care for the range of students' needs for them to be ready to learn in our classrooms. We are in this together. We are all dedicated to the work of providing quality public education and opportunity to Wichita children regardless of their zip code. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item?
Next item, public communications.
Public comments are limited to the items on the BOE agenda or items within the jurisdiction of the board. Speaker's comments are limited to three minutes on the registered topic. There will be a timer up in that corner for you to easily see. And, but they must not include personnel matters regarding, concerning district employees or matters that would violate the privacy of students. We're pleased to have three speakers tonight. The first one is Raymond Siphol. Our second speaker is Mark Ritchie. Welcome, Mr. Ritchie. No rush. Plenty of time.
President Reeser, Secretary Lieutenant Thompson, members of the board. My name is Mark Ritchie, and I live at 4700 West 13th in Wichita. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Up until 1994, all members of the Wichita School Board were elected at large. This method of election created a school board that is almost entirely white, and it was largely made up of members from a small section of East Wichita. There were no members of the BOE from the area north of 13th and east of I-135. For some time, there were only two members who lived on the west side and only one who lived south of Douglas. Rarely was there an African American, African American member. There had been none who were Hispanic. To solve this lack of representation, some patrons proposed that there be created six or seven districts where voters could nominate and then elect their own members of the school board. The school board in place at that time did not Instead, the school board proposed a plan that would divide the district into six areas, each with a board member who lived in that area, plus one member elected at large. Nominations would be carried out in each district, followed by an election that would be, that would be by all voters in the school district. The board's proposal was adopted in an election in 1994. This plan takes care of the geographic problem, but it does not allow voters in a district to actually choose who would represent them on the board. I did not support this plan, nor do I support it now. This plan could create the situation where the person who has the support of the majority of voters from the district does not win the vote, the citywide vote, and thus is not elected. Each of you has run for election to the school board under this plan. You know personally what it is like to run a campaign in an area created from approximately 1/6 of the district and then switch to a campaign that covers the entire city. You know from your own experience that putting together the organization and the money required to run citywide is difficult. The difficulty as sheer as that the candidate with support from outside of the candidate's district has a clear advantage. Nomination and election by voters in a single district is the ordinary way elections are done in this area. In Wichita, only the mayor is elected citywide. Members of the city council, the county commission, and even US Congress are nominated and elected by the voters in that area. None of these are required to run across the entire city, the entire county, or the entire state. USD 259 is the only political body around here where it is possible for a candidate to get a majority in a district and then be defeated by voters from outside his area. This is not representative democracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. And our third speaker is Sam Morris.
Hello. I'm speaking on behalf of all of the National Merit Semifinalists at East High. And we have agreed that it would only be right to use this platform you've given us to speak out against the implementation of the SRG grading system that will be going into high schools next year. We believe that if we are going to be recognized as examples of student success within the district, we have a duty to speak for the interests of the student body as we see them. From everything that we've read and heard, this system would do nothing to help anybody involved. It would burden the already overworked teaching staff by forcing them to rework their teaching systems. And this system would not only cause students to go towards the middle of the scale artificially making it easier to pass classes and raising graduation rates, but it would also cause the students not to learn much more. Why would we want to show all students' average when so many of them are exceptional? The fact that there would be less difference in student grades means that future students may not be able to stand out from their peers, making them less competitive in college and scholarship applications. Even during the pandemic, we have managed to thrive and compete under the current system. We know what is in place now isn't perfect, but we believe that standards reference grading would be far worse. So, we implore you to please not implement this system next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And, and Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under education, every student, future-ready strategic plan, schools are trusted as safe places.
Dr. Thompson, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. This evening, we will have a presentation as we do every Board of Education meeting around the work of the strategic plan, giving updates, answering any questions about any of the topics. And so, tonight, we will be working in goal number four, and that is schools are trusted as safe places. And we have two of my colleagues, I think it's about three of them that are going to be presenting. Two of you, okay. Two of my colleagues, Dr. Vince Evans and Mr. Gil Alvarez will, will take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. President Reeser, members of the board, I'm Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent. And with me this evening is my co-presenter, Vince Evans, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. Tonight, Vince and I will share Part Two of Strategic Plan Goal Number Four. At our last BOE meeting, we presented on the same goal number four, but it was about our physical spaces and how we create safe, civil, productive learning and work environment in all buildings within our district. You all participated in that wonderful interactive activity with Terry Moses last time we met. So, tonight, tonight's presentation will focus on the indicator of success, employability skills, to increase skills and competencies for staff and students to experience academic, career, and personal success. The presentation will include our mental health pilot update, new resources on our district webpage, resources, excuse me, on our webpage, employee assistance program data, and our behavior skills that promote employability skills. Dr. Evans will start us off with information about the, the success of our mental health pilot.
Good evening, President Reeser, BOE members, and Superintendent Thompson. I am sorry to inform you that I am not as entertaining as Ms. Terry Moses, and I do not have a cahoot for you this evening. I will try my best, though, to get you some good, high-quality information. Strategic Plan Goal Number Four states that one of our employability skills is to increase skills and competencies for staff and students to experience academic, career, and personal success. This evening, Mr. Alvarez and I will be sharing updates on initiatives that we are using to meet this need. And specifically, I'm going to bring your attention to two of those initiatives, the first of which you see on the screen now. I'd like to talk to you about our Mental Health Intervention Team. It's also known locally as the Kansas Opportunity Support Program. And for the sake of not causing any confusion tonight, I'm simply going to be referring to it as the Mental Health Intervention Team. The objective of this initiative is to eliminate barriers for students and families who need clinical therapy and access to the services of their community mental health centers. And that all sounds very fancy, but what does it really mean? And I would explain it best by taking you back to an old adage that I know, that you all know by heart, and that's, "It takes a village to raise a child." So, what do I mean by that? When you look around our community, there are ample examples of people that are helping to support our students. It's not just parents. It's not just the schools. We have churches, businesses, nonprofits. And if you look at the very bottom line of this slide, you would see the phrase, "Community Mental Health Centers." And you might be thinking to yourself, "Vince, I'm really not sure what that is." And I would tell you that you know examples of these organizations. Locally, there are places such as Calm Care, the Mental Health Association, and the Kansas Children's Service League. So, with that in mind, what are some of these barriers that are listed in the objective? And I would give you a description of this. If a parent decides that they have a child that needs mental health services, and they start to work with an organization like the Mental Health Association, that group might say, "Your student qualifies, and we would love to begin providing therapy for your child after school." But this is where the barriers can come into play. That parent might work in the evening. That parent might not have quality transportation to get their child from the home to the MHA. They might have schedule conflicts that arise. And so, what the Mental Health Intervention Team aims to do, and has done so successfully now for four years, is to eliminate that barrier by opening up our school doors and saying, "Community Mental Health Centers, come onsite and let us provide those services here where we can eliminate the barriers." I'll give you a real example of that from our district. One of our elementary schools, go back with maybe before this initiative started. So, it started in 2018, 2017 school year. This school, this elementary school, was serving three students through a community mental health center. We knew there was more students that needed assistance there, but that's how many were actually being served. The Mental Health Intervention Team initiative was put into place, and one semester later, just one semester, there was 38 students being served, from three to 38 in one semester's time. Mr. Alvarez, next slide, please. So, this is not a USD 259 initiative. We have some thanks to give out on this one. This was actually developed and enacted in 2018 by the Kansas Legislature, Legislature. And much thanks goes to our local state representative, Brenda Landware, for putting this into place. Also, from a local standpoint, I have to give props to my colleague, Terrell Davis. He did the initial work to get this off the ground. And to my colleague that's here tonight, Melissa Zimmerman, who runs this on a day-to-day basis. She is our district's Behavior Director. Some facts that I thought you might appreciate about the Mental Health Intervention Team. To date, it has currently served 580 students this year in our district. That number will continue to grow throughout the entire school year as new students are identified as being in need of support. It's currently in 37 buildings in our school district. And that number has grown every single year that the Mental Health Intervention Team has been in existence. This year, it took a giant jump of 13 new schools, largely due to ESAR funding. We also have, as I've mentioned previously, community mental health centers that work with us. And those folks are Calm Care, the Mental Health Association, and the Kansas Children's Service League. And we make this all run through a generous grant from the state, as well as our general fund and those aforementioned ESAR dollars. So, who does what when it comes to this relationship? And as you can see at the top, partnership is key. Everyone has their roles to play. So, if you work for one of those CMHCs, be it Calm Care, or the MHA, or the Kansas Children's Service League, you're going to provide one of three things. Either case management, and those are really our folks that serve in a mentorship role. They are largely out in the community. They're doing home visits. They are supporting students to get what they need out in the community. Or onsite therapy. That's what I mentioned previously about us opening those school doors and bringing people onsite. Or medical management. If you're a parent that says, "Hey, I have this diagnosis, and I need this help with meds," that's really somewhere where the CMHC can shine. As for Wichita Public Schools, we call our folks that work on this initiative our Behavioral Health School Liaisons. I'm very proud to say that we have 10 new Behavioral Health School Liaisons this year, again, thanks to our ESAR dollars. And they work hard on reducing those barriers that we talked about, making sure that students are getting the wraparound services that they need. And they also are in charge of tracking and collecting our data to prove that this works. And we do have four years' worth of data. And year after year, it has shown that this helps to improve academics, behavior, and attendance for students that are participating in this initiative. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that's involved with it. It is an absolute asset to our students. We are very thankful for that. We are very thankful for everyone that's put it in place. Do have one other item that I wanted to share with you tonight. And I mentioned that the Mental Health Intervention Team has been in place for four years now. This initiative, the Mental Health Matters webpage, has been in existence for less than a day. This is brand-new as of today, so it's cause for celebration. And I want to go ahead and while I'm thinking about it, give props to some of our colleagues. This would be Hillary Trudeau, Stephanie Anderson, and Dr. Holly Jaeger. Those are some of our program specialists. And they, along with the team, put this page together, and the reason for it is this. Last year in May, we put out a survey and went out to the community, to the staff, and to the students. I don't know how many of you have ever put out a survey before, but the response rates can sometimes not be so great. There was 18,500 people that responded to this survey. And one of the number-one absolute things that they said that they wanted to see as a priority in Wichita Public Schools was more information about mental health supports and the mental health support for our students. And so this page has now been launched, and it talks about initiatives not only within the school district, but initiatives that are in the community as well. And some examples you might find, if you were to visit usd259.org/mentalhealth, would be things like, this one's timely, coping with stress in the holiday season. If you're somebody like me that's starting to have that anxiety build because you haven't done any of your Christmas shopping, this would be good timing. You could have resources by building. So for example, if you heard me or you're at home right now and you're thinking, "I wonder if my school has the Mental Health Intervention Team?" You could look and find on this webpage. It has information like suicide awareness. I know that every year, every single employee in Wichita Public Schools is trained in suicide prevention. I just had my training last week. Very important. One more example is a parent crisis helpline. That's run through the state for anybody that needs help 24 hours a day, and much, much more. So please, we welcome you to check out our brand-new webpage. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gil Alvarez.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. You previously heard Sean Hutzbuth, our Chief Human Resources Officer, and his team present on Calm Psych, our new employee assistance program this year. This was another strategy that we enhanced significantly this year in response to employee feedback. This seemed like an ideal time to bring you a couple of key data indicators from the early work of this program. So if you look at the slide, you can see this is third-quarter usage of our Calm Psych resource. And this is, when I say third quarter, this is really from August to October. So we continue to monitor every three months. But in 2020, we had 205 employees that took advantage of Calm Psych. And this year, between August and October, we had 893 employees take advantage of our Calm Psych. This is an increase of 688 employees that used Calm Psych from August through October. So we are excited about where we're going with this support system for our employees as well. The Kansas State Department of Education defines a successful high school graduate as having the academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, and employability skills to be successful in post-secondary education, and the attainment of an industry-recognized certification or in the workforce without the need for remediation. So it is important that our Wichita Public School graduates have the preparation and skills listed and bold on the definition we see here. For those of you familiar with the Rose Capacity Standards, which were identified by the Kansas Supreme Court as the framework for the success of Kansas students, these are the very elements around which the state's vision and our Wichita Public School strategic plan are constructed. In past presentations, this definition also rang true for our Graduation Goal and Graduation Plus Plan, providing options for our graduates to be successful in whatever post-secondary opportunity they choose. Our Goal Number Four also focuses on employability skills so students can experience academic, career, and personal success. Based on the Kansas Social, Emotional, and Character Development Standards, which are also known as SECD standards, that were adopted in 2012 and revised in 2018, our district's Behavior Work Group created Behavior and Employability Scales. These SECD standards encompass practicing good citizenship as respectful, responsible, empathetic, and ethical individuals through making healthy decisions, practicing personal safety, understanding risk prevention, promoting a positive school culture, problem-solving effectively, and valuing excellence. A quick review of the Rose Standards illustrates that what we identify as employability skills in these scales are the foundation for student success across the seven Rose Capacity Standards. At the elementary level, which is pre-K through fifth grade, we call them Behavior Scales. At the secondary level, sixth through 12th grade, we call them Employability Scales. So why are Behavior and Employability Scales important? As our district continues to support the whole child, we believe that each student has worth and dignity and is valued and understood through essential behavioral supports. These Behavior and Employability Scales are a systematic tool we can use to transparently plan, teach, and measure each student's employability skills and work habits. So what are Behavior and Employability Scales? Behavior and Employability Skills articulate a learning progression toward a set of learning goals required for our students to be successful in school and life, as well as for post-secondary success. These scales allow teachers to consider behavior separate from academics, providing an additional window into the learning process that is often hidden in traditional grading and reporting. Separating what students know and can do academically from their behavior and work habits is an important component in a standards-focused environment. Behavior and Employability Skills can help everyone better understand and support student behavior and work habits through a learning approach rather than just a disciplinary approach. The Behavior and Employability Scales, as well as all academic standards, are available for your review online at www.usd259.org/standards, and that is on the screen as well. So what specific standards do our Behavior and Employability Scales represent? Starting with social development standards, which focus on social awareness, which demonstrate awareness of others' thoughts, feelings, and differences. Interpersonal skills demonstrate communication and social skills to interact effectively with others within relationships. Personal development standards focus on self-awareness, which identifies, understands, and expresses personal thoughts and emotions in healthy ways. Self-management understands, reflects upon, and uses strategies for managing thoughts, behaviors, and setting goals. Character development standards focus on decision-making skills, which demonstrate responsible and effective decision-making in a variety of settings. Problem-solving skills develop, implement, and model effective problem-solving in a variety of settings. Core principles demonstrate traits of good character in a variety of areas, such as honesty, kindness, self-control, and perseverance. We then have our Work Habit Scales, which focus on work completion, completing work by the designated time, participation and engagement in learning, which is listens, participates in class, and engages in the learning process on a consistent basis, and following directions, know and act in accordance to classroom routines and verbal or written directions. So tonight, we covered the Mental Health Intervention Pilot and the resources available, the usage of our Employee Assistance Program, and the alignment of our Behavior and Employability Skills to the Kansas Social, Emotional, Character Development Standards. This work of Goal Number Four plays an important role in our schools to be trusted as safe places so that we continue to create safe, civil, productive learning and work environments and increase skills and competencies for staff and students to experience academic, career, and personal success. As we continue to monitor the success of our strategic plan, we know the impact the pandemic has had on our staff, students, and community, which is why the work outlined in our strategic plan may be complex, but vital to the success of our district and our community. So at this time, we are now open to any questions you may have.
Dr. Thompson?
I don't necessarily have a question. I guess I see that there's some question, someone has put their name up. But I just wanted to just kind of make sure that if there are folks out there, parents, or anyone that's interested in knowing exactly what your students are learning, whether it's through our social and emotional learning or any others. Mr. Alvarez gave a website address, and I'd like to repeat that. And those are the things that teachers use to be able to teach your students in any content area, any subject matter that you're interested in. Those standards are there for you to review.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Cheryl?
Yes, Mr. Alvarez. We've been working, this has obviously been part of our strategic plan for the whole length of the plan. And as we have moved into--
Sorry? As we have moved into and are working through COVID in our district, how greatly has it impacted our availability to collect data, to extend our plan, to move into new areas with the plan? Because I know the mental health project started four years ago, but we've just expanded it greatly because of, we got some ESER funds, but also we just have the opportunity to do that. So how greatly has it impacted our strategic plan pieces?
Well, I know for, with the pandemic, has definitely impacted different areas. Obviously, whether it be around the employability skills that we want our students to maintain, as well as academic success as well. So as we look through our strategic plan with graduation or even student achievement increase, it's definitely impacted because there's been gaps in the learning, that we want to continue to close those gaps. Because we want to close not only the achievement gap, but opportunity gaps, but even make sure that we increase our student achievement as we continue to move forward with it. But there's definitely been some obstacles because of the pandemic. Definitely, especially when we went to remote, as well as onsite, and we're switching back and forth. So we want to maximize the learning for our students, and hopefully with us being back in school and being able to see them face-to-face, that we can actually use our intervention programs to close that gap.
And we are collecting data, not only for this area, but for all of our areas of our plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And has it slowed us down with that data collection?
Well, we always want to measure and look at the data. Now, as far as, are we at the same pace that we would want to be if we didn't have a pandemic? Possibly not. We need to continue to do the things that we know, both for employability skills, as we support the whole child, as well as academics. So increasing student learning, increasing student achievement is definitely, as well as continuing to increase graduation rates, is an area that we want to continue to improve.
Okay. With that said, I'd like to place a motion, if it's okay with the Board President.
Okay. It has also been, this pandemic has impacted our ability to be able to give the state assessment. I'll just say that one in particular. You didn't have students onsite last year. You could talk about fast bridge, you could talk about any of the assessments that we give. We have not been able to give those assessments to all students for a period of time. And so this year, because now we're back, we can get our numbers back up of how many students we're assessing. Because last year, even with our state assessments, there were students that were not in school. And so we, you know, we had to ask parents to bring their kid to school to take the assessment. Many families chose not to do that. So even within the state assessments, we didn't have a gauge for our data, as far as that is concerned, alongside any of the other assessments that we were given to students. Some of those teachers, bless their hearts, were trying to give the assessments to kids when they were at home. I mean, so it did impact our ability to be able to gather really good data, to really see, you know, how students were doing or not doing because of not that ability to be able to have a student face-to-face throughout the pandemic.
Well, this board worked very diligently. And we, all of us except Mia, were on the board at the time that we developed the strategic plan and set it in place for five years. With, beyond our circumstance, beyond our control, with the pandemic, it's really kind of put a bit of a roadblock in front of us to be able to move this plan forward. Is that kind of a true statement?
It is true. And the teachers and staff worked very diligently to try to keep moving along the best that they could with the situation that was in place. But it did have an impact on our ability with our, to move our strategic plan data forward.
Right. And so I would like to move that we extend the action cycle for every student future-ready strategic plan, which is currently scheduled to conclude at the end of the 22-23 school year. I propose that the current plan be extended by two years to conclude at the end of the 24-25 school year in order to allow teachers, students, and administrators to overcome the uncertain impacts of COVID and regain an upward trajectory of success. As part of this timeline, I move that in the fall of 2024, we begin our community listening journey in order to evaluate every student future-ready plan and to develop the next strategic plan for the Board of Education to approve in April 2025. I put that on the table as a motion for us to consider.
I'd second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Ernestine?
Well, I was just going to comment on how excited I was about the expansion of the Employees Assistance Program. Again, with the COVID and with all of the other stressors going on in the world right now, I'm just real excited. This district has had an Employees Assistance Program since about the 80s, I think. But to have this expansion, I want to know, is it free for employees to go get counseling?
Yes, it is. And I want to just remind everyone who's listening, we had an employee program, but it was not as robust as we heard our community say. And as Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Evans talked about, when we did the survey, we asked people, you say mental health, what does that mean? And the staff was overwhelmingly telling us the things that they needed and wanted from this program. And then our Human Resources Department went out and sought that out and then brought it back to the board. And then you all actually spent quite a bit of money of your ESER dollars to be able to build that program up, to be able to meet the needs of what the teachers say that they wanted. And because you met that need, it's pretty evident that whatever they asked for, they were delivered, and now they're using it, is what we wanted you to see.
Right, and that's what I'm excited about, is that that increase of people being able to actually meet their needs, have their needs met, that's the bad problem. That's where I was.
Thank you, Ernestine. Cheryl, I appreciate you making that motion, and I think I can support that motion. I just wanted to make one, clear up one thing, because of the uncertain impacts of COVID and the fact of regaining a trajectory of success, which I think is the essence of what your motion is. I just want to make sure, go over the timeframe or timeline of what brought us to today. And I'll ask Dr. Thompson to confirm if I'm off-base here. My understanding is, because there's an inherent conflict between employability and achievement. They're two different subjects. We get torn in different directions. Some of us want to go strictly on talking about standardized testing and achievement. Some of us want to go strictly employability skills, so-called soft skills, while not ignoring achievement. The Kansas Department of Education, if I understand, went on a listening tour themselves, and it was the business community that really raised the level of future-ready in the consciousness of the Kansas public. Would you say that's correct?
Yes, sir.
And then at that time, we started our strategic plan and made it five years. And then we had COVID, still struggling through COVID. And now what this attempt to do is to continue that balancing act between what the business community is asking us to do, and that is graduate students who are actually employable, have skills, and are well-maintained. And then at the same time, bringing along that piece of student achievement. And that's the timeline that's in my head. I just want to make sure that that's-- I just want to make sure that that's fairly accurate or somewhat accurate.
That is correct. Your timeline of the events and things that you've identified are correct.
Okay. Well, this motion makes complete sense to me then. Any other comments before we take a vote? All right, we have a motion on the floor. And it basically is to extend the strategic plan from 2223 through 2425 due to the uncertain impacts of COVID and regain an upward trajectory of success. And that there is a listening tour-- you mentioned a listening tour-- that would start in-- excuse me, when is that again?
It would start--
In the fall of '24. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Motion carries seven zero. Yes, Ernestine?
One of the things that makes me confident about this vote is I am so impressed with our strategic plan. It has been a wise one from the very beginning. And we've just seen pieces and parts just be put in that make it work. I feel excited about it. It's not like I've-- I can't see any way to improve this strategic plan right now because I just really think that we've just got the pieces that are fitting just right. I just am excited about continuing it because it's such an excellent strategic plan. And it's one that's got the pieces in it that you all are putting together, that the different parts of the departments that we've got going. I think that we are really served well to have the strategic plan continue until that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernestine. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item.
Thank you, Gil. Thank you, Vince.
Next item under education. 2022 Legislative Agenda.
As we do every December, before the legislative sessions officially began, we work with stakeholders and-- to come up with ideas or thoughts about what we would like to take to legislators as an agenda, to be able to have a solid plan of things that we want to go out and visit with our legislators at the federal level, alongside the state level, and our local level. And so we started this about four-- maybe four years ago, building Legislative Agenda for the Board of Education and making sure that when we go, we have our ducks in a row and we can utilize all of the stakeholders who would like to join in for that advocacy for our students and our teachers and be able to-- not just teachers too, but actually the entire staff-- to be able to go out and advocate on your behalf. So Mr. Terrell Davis is here to talk to you a little bit about your Legislative Agenda for the 2022 session.
Welcome, Terrell.
Thank you. President Reeser, Vice President Blakely, esteemed board members, awesome Superintendent Dr. Thompson. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight our 2022 Legislative Agenda. We've got four items that we are in support of, and then three items that we would oppose. First item is high academic standards to help prepare students to meet and/or exceed the Rose standards and to be successful in college and/or career environment. That is in alignment with the Gannon case. Outcomes in terms of the additional money from the Gannon case are all tied to the actual Rose standards, or you will see Rose capacities. And so we support having those high standards to have all of our kids to meet those. Secondly, follow state statute and fund 92% of the excess cost of special education. As a state, we've hovered around 71%. We've even dipped down to 69%. But actual statute is that it would fund at 92%. Number three is legislation to stop runners with school bus cameras and appropriate fines. We want to make sure that all of our kids are safe, not only on our campus, but also as they're getting to school. And it's important that we stop those individuals who run past those stop signs on our school buses. And we're in support of legislation to help enforce bus cameras and appropriate fines for those individuals. Number four is a temporary reduction of capers mandatory waiting period for working after retirement to 30 days. As we look at our staff issues across the state-- in the nation, in terms of staff shortages, there are going to be more and more people who may be coming out of retirement to work. And so we want to decrease that waiting period to down to 30 days so they could retire in May and be ready to teach in that next fall. Number five is a temporary reduction to the additional caper fees placed on school districts and/or employees returning to the workforce after retirement. Again, one of the deterrents from school districts hiring people in capers is the fines that either the school district or the employee will pick up when those individuals are quote-unquote "double-dipping." And so we want to see a temporary reduction in those caper fees with those individuals. Number six is improvement to the bond and interest state aid formula designed to accurately reflect the growth in average assess valuation for school districts. That deals with Mount Leavenworth, or Leavenworth piece that has a zero assessment piece. They're actually factored into the formula. And so it kind of brings everything down because of that community. And so we'd love to see that community taken out of the formula. It's a better representation of Kansas if that community is taken out of the formula. Number seven is continued expansion of the mental health pilot. And Dr. Evans did an awesome job of kind of explaining that. That is an actual baby of the Wichita Public Schools, myself and Dr. Thompson. I think we were on the job about six months, and we started going into meetings with legislators on developing that mental health pilot. If you remember, the initial pilot was for six school districts, $10 million proviso. Wichita got $6.7 million of that $10 million proviso. And we've been able to expand that program every year. With the expansion, though, we want to make sure-- so when we first started, it was at 100% funded by the state. Then it went down to 75%. We want to kind of fight that to make sure it stays at that level. So we want to see expansion. But we also want to see the state put money in that so that it's not taxing school districts, not just Wichita, but school districts across the state. And so we want to see proper expansion with the budget to go along with it. So three things that we are in opposition of. First thing is any reduction or modification of the funding for the five-year plan as approved by the Kansas Supreme Court. We are in year three now. We have two more years, and then we move to the APIU. And we don't want any modification of that. No plans at this point in time. Keep that plan as is, and let's not modify that. Again, that's tied to the Rose capacities. And so we'll be able to truly evaluate, if you will, school districts based on the additional funding and their ability to meet the Rose capacities. Number two is any attempt to remove or limit the judicial branch authority contained in Article VI in the Kansas Constitution. That's been a big issue the last couple of years. They've never gotten enough votes for that. And it's kind of dropped off last year. And so we're hoping that we'll continue. But we also want that to be out there, that if it was to come up, Wichita is opposed to any kind of modification of our Kansas Constitution to take any authority away from our judicial branch. And then last one is legislation supporting tuition tax credits or any form of vouchers to schools which are not maintained, developed, or operated by the local elected Board of Education. And that's a voucher system. A voucher by any name is still a voucher. And we're in opposition of any voucher system of any school that's not operated or has responsibility to this board or their local school board. And so that's our 2022 Legislative Agenda. There are some things on here that you don't see anything about critical race theory. Because again, we do not teach critical race theory. And so it's not on our legislative agenda. But please understand that if there is an attack against our district in that area, we would defend ourselves and testify against anything and make sure that the record is set straight in terms of what we teach and do not teach concerning critical race theory, which we do not teach in the Wichita Public School System or in any public school system in Kansas or America, period. Any questions?
Terrell, that was pretty straightforward. Did you-- the special committee that met just recently, did they speak on any of these proactive or negative issues?
Absolutely. So I was on schedule to testify on day two. There was an hour allotment for myself, the Superintendent of KCK, and the Superintendent of Atchison. We were to give a 10-minute testimony and a five-minute Q and A period. I went first. And after 45 minutes of our one-hour allotment, the other two got a chance to talk, so to speak. The big thing is the Rose capacities. So the legislators would love to tie school funding to state assessments. And they then quote the court case in terms of the additional funds given. One of the questions that was given to me was basically just setting the bar that actually the court case speaks to the Rose capacities, not to state assessments. State assessments were what we used to identify that there was a learning gap, if you will, across the state in terms of minority students, as well as free and reduced lunch students, and their more affluent peers. But the court case ties funding to the Rose capacities. And so it's going to be important and imperative that we're out there telling our story of how we're having success on the Rose capacities, including the state assessment and other capacities that are involved in the Rose capacities.
Ernestine?
As far as you know, is there any opposition to the financial support of this expanding mental health part? We're so grateful to Representative Landwehr, that Brenda Landwehr being-- helping us get this set up. And is-- are you sensing that there's anybody saying, oh, we shouldn't have a mental health support in the schools? Or is there-- are they seeing the sensibility of this?
So that's a great question. So there's no opposition. Where the issue comes in at is how do you fund it? So again, this original program was a $10 million proviso. And it was 100% to the school districts in terms of being covered from the proviso. In year two, the expansion-- they didn't add money to the 10 million. What they did is made school districts then fund 25% of it. And so they took our 25% and then kind of spread it out to increase the pilot, if you will. So what we would have loved to have seen is an additional 5 million, keep it at 100% for school districts, and then expand it that way. And so what we're pushing for is to make sure it stays at 75%, which is where we're at now, and that we don't necessarily have to pick up 50%. What it could potentially end up being is an unfunded mandate if we're not careful. And it's a great program, and it does benefit kids and families. But again, we can't add another unfunded mandate.
Any other questions for Terrell? If not, I'd like to move that the board authorize the district to advocate for the identified issues and to continue to work with our legislators regarding the issues that would impact our district, basically tell our story in a-- that would-- anything that would affect our school district for the upcoming legislative session.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? It was moved by me and seconded by Ernestine. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Terrell. Appreciate your work on this area and appreciate your time up in Topeka.
Thank you.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item under education. 202021 Stealth After School and Summer Program Report.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you for this opportunity to be able to share some information around our Stealth After School and Summer Project programs. And so we actually are passing out some information about it so that you can kind of see. This is actually a program that helps us to be able to work in the areas of science, technology, engineering, art, leader-- and leadership, health, and other opportunities for our students. And so these programs happen in the summertime. And they also happen in some of our schools after school is out. And so today, I have two of my colleagues here that will share with you kind of a little bit more about the program and what we're doing and how we're monitoring the data and things that happen within this particular program.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Blakely, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board. My name is Jennifer Hartman, and I serve as the Program Manager in our Grants and Development Office. Tonight, I'm here to share a little bit about our 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant-funded programs, which you may know as Stealth After School and Summer. You have in front of you a copy of our annual report, which breaks everything that I'm going to talk about tonight down into greater detail. But I'm appreciative to share some of the highlights with you this evening. We've had incredible challenges throughout the course of the pandemic. But despite that, we've also had great opportunities to adapt, grow, and serve students and families in new and different ways. To start off, I want to give you some background on Stealth for those who may be unfamiliar. As I said, we're a 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant-funded program. These centers establish-- the goal is to establish these centers that provide students academic enrichment opportunities along with activities that are designed to supplement students' regular classroom academic programs during out-of-school time. All Stealth sites are funded by this Title IV grant, which is awarded for five-year periods. We currently have 10 of these sites, each in various grant years. However, for the purpose of tonight's report, I'll refer to the eight that were in operation during the 202021 school year. As Dr. Thompson mentioned, our name is an acronym, and it stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, Leadership, Tutoring, and Health. Every day, we offer homework help and/or tutoring focusing on math and English language arts. After-school staff works closely with the school day teachers to ensure that students are focused on the standards that they need the most assistance with, placing a focused and intentional effort on meeting or exceeding grade-level standards. Sites also offer focused enrichment time daily centered around one of those theme areas mentioned as part of our name. The activities vary greatly, but always align with those central themes. Some of our most popular activities include Makerspace Centers, culinary carts, art projects, drumming, science experiments, gardening, and robotics. We've been very intentional about ensuring that all enrichment activities align directly with curricular standards and help students make progress towards their academic goals. Social and emotional learning is also woven throughout the program from the time that students arrive for snack, all the way through tutoring and enrichment, so that we focus on educating the whole child, and students are empowered to grow academically and socially. Our program goals are set forth by the state and include that all students reach high academic standards at a minimum attaining proficiency or better in ELA and math. This means that all program-enrolled students receive tutoring support and that day-school teachers of at least 60% of students who are assigned homework report increased rates of completion. Number two, all students will graduate from high school. One of the many ways we look at this is that 90% of participants would not be suspended during program. 80% will not be engaged in violent acts, and all will participate in activities that integrate real-life problem-solving, arts, STEM, recreation, cultural opportunities, and activities with service learning. Finally, number three, family engagement will be embedded in the entirety of the program. We offer a variety of educational resources and services to families of all students with the goal that 80% of families surveyed indicate satisfaction with communication and are engaged in the provided opportunities. Our annual evaluation, prepared by Green Bush Educational Service Center, indicates that we are either meeting or very close to meeting all of those established goals at all program sites. Before we jump into the recap of the year and the data, I want to take a minute to recognize and thank our site coordinators at all of our program sites. Kristy Wise at Adams, Shelley Westoff at Cleveland, Madison Walden at Ortiz, Faith Palos and Nicole Margheim at Park, Claire Moxley at Linwood, Devon Kuzma at Spate, Hannah Evans-Mendoza at Washington, Marcia Geir at White, Tiffany Reeves and Danielle Jones at Anderson, and Sarah Pettz at Gordon Parks Academy. In addition to these site coordinators who oversee programming this school year, I'd like to take a second to thank Dylan Osborne, who served as Site Coordinator at Linwood before accepting an Assistant Principal position, and Lyndon Moore, who served as Spate Site Coordinator last year. These individuals are driven, tireless, creative, and motivated, and they truly embody a students-first mentality. Now, I'll talk for a few minutes about our program's pandemic response. As schools closed in March 2020, programs came to a screeching halt across the state. As we regrouped throughout the spring and began discussion on what that summer could look like, our staff indicated an overwhelming desire to connect with their families throughout the pandemic. Through the course of the spring, we held a series of meetings that led to the summer suitcase. One of our-- One of our Stealth principals had previously worked in another district and had this idea for a fundraiser, and we loved it as a way to reach families instead. So after-school teachers jumped on board and were the driving force in bringing this to life. From here, the extensive and complicated planning phase began. Once we had the go-ahead from district leadership, we moved quickly to communicate opportunities to families and create a sign-up mechanism. Our Stealth staff, again, was the driving force for this project. Each grade-level summer suitcase kindergarten through fifth grade contained 14 activities planned by our after-school staff with the directive that they needed to be interactive, engaging, and shouldn't involve technology since that was still a significant barrier at the time. The lessons were compiled into instructional flipbooks, supply lists were generated, and the ordering began. The pandemic had created significant supply chain issues, which still rings true today. But despite that, we were able to procure at least 90% of the supplies for all activities in each grade level. And while we're talking about the summer suitcase, I would be remiss if I didn't thank our operations team. The print shop, purchasing department, warehouse, and receiving teams were outstanding, and this project would not have been possible without them. We assembled the suitcases at the AMAC gym since it provided ample space for materials, adequate workspace to complete the project, and space for social distancing. Our after-school staff once again completed this work, and our Stealth teachers are some of the best in the business. Anytime I sent out a sign-up sheet, they were the first ones and had it filled within minutes. And one of them even commented that you know you have a dedicated staff when you can ask them to count 82 popsicle sticks 450 times in a row, and they don't bat an eye. They're truly the heart and soul of this program, and I'm grateful for their steadfast commitment. Finally, we distributed the suitcases on June 18th of 2020. The entire project took approximately five weeks, start to finish, and we were able to serve 1,746 students through this project in an uncertain time when they really needed this connection to school. Parents were thrilled, and 95% of the respondents to our end-of-summer survey felt that this provided meaningful enrichment during the pandemic. I've included a complete breakdown of this project in the insert in your annual report. The start of the 2020-2021 school year presented some new pandemic-related challenges for our program. Gratefully, we received significant flexibility and grace from KSDE on our requirements related to the grant. So we were able to make this work within the parameters set forth by the district as well as city and county health officials. So that left the question, do we do in-person, virtual, or both? Short answer, we did both. Some sites offered both in-person and remote options to ensure that my school remote learners were also able to take advantage of these enrichment opportunities. We did not have any notable issues with sickness throughout the year, and we were able to continue to offer in-person programming the entire year, with the exception of the time period around the holidays when the entire district went remote. Even during that time, we offered virtual programming, homework help, and technology support for all students and families. In-person programming throughout the year had additional safety considerations in place, including masks, social distancing, personal water bottles, and cohort groups. We put all program partner visits on hold and reduced our average daily attendance by 50%. As you heard earlier, our program goals indicate that family engagement and community partnership is meant to be embedded throughout our program. This happens in a variety of ways and was yet another part of our program that was altered by the pandemic. For most of the 2020-2021 school year, our partners were limited to providing services virtually. But luckily, they were ready and willing to jump in and support no matter what it took. This outside connection is critical for students and allows them to see that people outside of their immediate school building care about and advocate for their success. Some of the partners who adapted to continue to serve students during the school year included, but were not limited to, Prime Fit, Tanganyika Wildlife Park, K-State Research and Extension, and Exploration Place. Family engagement also took on a new look as sites continued to connect with families in various ways, whether it was through technology help centers to assist my school remote students, virtual family nights, or simply updates through remind or other messaging services. Now I'm going to show you how after-school works for our kids. The data you're about to see reflects the importance of after-school and how a targeted intervention such as after-school can really make a huge difference when it comes to student success. You'll see the academic behavior and attendance data for eight of the 10 current sites. Our two newest sites, Anderson and Gordon Parks, had not yet joined us, so we'll be excited to share their progress next year. Keep in mind that our Stealth students represent some of the highest-needs students, whether that's academically, behaviorally, socio-economically, or any other number of risk factors that may affect their progress. Our program is specifically designed to help move the needle and ensure that these students meet or exceed their standards. After-school programs are proven to improve behavior, increase achievement, and create a sense of belonging for participating students, which is critical to supporting the whole child. We'll look at our overall program data and the difference that Stealth is making for our kids, but you can find the data broken down by site in your annual report in front of you. Throughout the school year, we served 296 students. And when you multiply that by the number of days that each site had programs, we served students a total of 38,554 times last year. Again, that's approximately half of our normal number because we had to cut our attendance in order to maintain those social distancing requirements. On the screen, you'll see the track standards data for English language arts and math. Students who participate in Stealth are represented by the blue bars on the bottom, whereas the general student population is represented by the green bars. In nearly every grade level, students who participate in our program have outperformed their peers in both ELA and math. Our intentional focus on tutoring, along with the collaboration between the school day teachers and after-school staff to ensure that we are targeting the appropriate skills and standards, has created incredible success as we look at this data. Fastbridge screeners are used to assess foundational skills, and we use these screeners in math and English language arts to determine if students are meeting the benchmarks in these areas. If the students aren't meeting benchmarks, this allows schools to see which students need additional intervention. Typically, we administer these three times per year in the fall, winter, and spring. And in the charts, you can see that from fall to spring, students made significant growth in ELA. Stealth students, again, outperformed non-participating students. However, it's worth noticing that all students gained ground even throughout a challenging year. State assessments are another area where Stealth students performed exceptionally well over the past year. And as referenced in the charts above, Stealth students are doing incredibly well in ELA, and math scores are exceptionally high. Our grant does not require us to track our science state assessment data, but it's a key performance metric for us since we have such a heavy science focus. And the science scores for participating fifth graders are slightly higher than the non-participating peers. We expect to see this to continue to grow even more in the coming years. Finally, behavior and attendance data. Stealth essentially focuses on reducing behavior incidents and combating chronic absenteeism by placing a priority on building relationships between students and staff across grade levels. Students in our program often struggle in these areas, and Stealth provides a way for them to learn to be better. Both charts on the screen, along with anecdotal evidence provided by program staff, indicates that students who participate have better relationships with both students and staff and are more connected to their school communities. The behavior data on the left indicates that we have a couple of tough grade levels still. But remember that we serve some of the highest-needs students, and we're constantly working to improve those relationships. On the right is our attendance data. Reducing the rate of chronic absenteeism is a significant piece of the Every Student Future Ready strategic plan. Stealth has proven wildly successful in combating this problem, with students who are involved in after-school being in attendance more days on average than students who don't participate. This is a huge win for our program, and we're very excited about that. Now that I've shared some of the data and the numbers, I want you to hear about the impact of our program from someone who's not me. And I am going to introduce Terri Manning, our principal from Adams Elementary. She's been one of our biggest supporters of after-school programming.
And Terri, before you start, I'm going to see if the two people who have queued in want to ask their question at this point, or... Julie?
Sure, I'll go ahead and ask my questions. You haven't gotten to the budget piece yet.
Not yet.
You may answer this when you get there. But this is a really exciting program and a really nice presentation tonight.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I especially like the community partnership and family engagement pieces, that those are included in this. And of course, your data is wonderful, seeing how it's impacted the kids towards success. It sounded like you said that we're just starting the second year of a five-year program. Did I hear that correctly?
We have 10 sites, and they're actually all in various phases of the grant. So we have four schools that are in year five of their grant. So we'll be looking at reapplication. Then we have three in year four, one in year three, and two in year one.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
And, and this is an entirely grant-funded program?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Yeah, those were my questions. So thank you very much for this great presentation.
Of course.
Look forward, Terri, for my building principal.
Thank you, Julie. Terri?
All right. Thank you very, very much for having me here. When Jennifer asked me about talking to you this evening, it occurred to me that I needed to go to the source, which were our staff who are working this program. When we think about how this has impacted Adams Kids, third-grade teacher Diane Van Berklio states, "The kids that go to Stealth are learning how to think differently and ask more questions. I think they're developing confidence. They look forward to Stealth." Second-grade teacher Donna Jo Hunsinger states, "Stealth has helped establish relationships with students and staff across grade levels, which holds students in higher accountability, both in Stealth and during the school day. Students are excited to participate in activities they don't always have the opportunity to experience during the school day." And our incredible coordinator, Kristy Wise, says, "The smaller groups allow teachers to really get to know the students. Cooking, gardening, drumming, coding, sewing, TV broadcasting, and choir are just a few of the many things that our kids get to do. Our students are getting to experience activities they may not get to do if it wasn't for Stealth." The partnerships that we've created with the extension office, with the master gardeners, is absolutely incredible. These gardeners are typically retired volunteers that love coming to Adams each week, and they've all built great relationships with our students. One of the master gardeners delivered handwritten notes and pictures from gardening to each of our kids that was in his group, and the kids were elated to receive this from Mr. Mike. Stealth provides a safe place for kids to be after-school, and parents are thankful for this. We're working hard on social-emotional learning by providing many opportunities to collaborate appropriately together with the goal of this cooperation continuing into the school day. We have at Adams more than 75 students that attend Monday through Thursday. This is a huge help to our kids, but a great support for our families as well that need that extra care for their kids after school. I've actually heard parents tell their kids, "If they get in trouble during the school day, you're not going to Stealth tonight." We've had students that have had to go home sick during the school day, and I've literally heard them crying in the office because they don't want to go home because that means they're going to miss Stealth tonight. Stealth seems to be seen as a privilege for our kids and so much fun that kids just don't want to miss out. Adams is at Ninth and Oliver, and we're located in a food desert. Through Stealth, we've been able to build a garden on our playground where kids are learning how to grow fruits and vegetables and then actually eat the fruits of their labor. We've got lots of great opportunities ahead as we are writing the grant for the next five years to include a larger garden and a much bigger focus on farm-to-table. I was initially worried about our teachers. I didn't want them to burn out with all of this after-school and summer work that they're doing. But our teachers are giving 100% during the day and then absolutely loving the opportunity to teach fun and engaging activities in the evenings, either to their own students, or many of the teachers have chose to work, have chosen to work with different grade levels so that they're building even more mentoring relationships within the school. Our students get to work with trusted adults who are mentoring them. Students are learning fun new science and experiencing reading, math, and writing in highly engaging ways. And this is all totally free to our parents. It's a win-win for everybody, and we're so grateful to have this amazing opportunity for our kids at Adams.
Thank you, Terri, for sharing that. Before I wrap up, I do want to touch on our summer program that we held in June of 2021. We started this presentation talking about how the pandemic had altered our summer plans in 2020, so I thought it was only right to share that we were able to make a safe and impactful comeback in 2021. Not all of our sites had summer program written into it, but thanks to additional support from outside grants as well as title services, we were able to leverage funds and offer a four-week summer program at all eight of our Stealth sites last year. We offered breakfast and lunch at each site, and many of those also served as community lunch sites for families to come in as well. Transportation was available at select sites, and the entire program was once again free for participating families. For some students, this was their first time back in our building since the pandemic began, so it was a great chance to prepare them for the upcoming school year. On average, last summer, we saw 320 students per day in our program. Finally, I want to touch on the services that we provide in the Grants and Development Office to support these programs. I need to start by thanking my colleague, Kim Kennedy, who couldn't join us this evening. She is our grant budget technician, and she ensures that all state and federal reporting is completed, all district accounting procedures are followed, and all funds are used judiciously. Kim is the other half of my brain for this project, and I am very grateful for her support. She's essential to it, to our program. The eight sites that were in operation in 2020-2021 had a total overall budget for the entire lifespan of their grants totaling $2,925,566. Of that, salaries account for 76.3% of the overall budget, which reinforces our belief that the most value comes from relationships formed in after-school. The remaining budget is allocated for things like consumable supplies, STEM equipment, enrichment supplies like sewing machines, culinary carts, as well as math and literacy resources. We also have things like required travel, student transportation at select sites, and various other program needs that are budgeted into the grant. Students also receive a snack daily during after-school that is provided at no cost through the After-School Care Snack Program facilitated by our Nutrition Services Department. Our office also ensures that all the pieces of the Stealth puzzle fit nicely together. While each site has some autonomy to choose their own specific activities and daily schedules that best fit their school communities, we ensure that programs are all aligned to achieve our goals. One of the main responsibilities of our office is to ensure that grant requirements and outcomes are met, and we work closely with the district's assessment and research team to provide data to both external evaluators and our site leaders every semester. Our schools track daily attendance with Easy Reports, which is a system that allows us to have a real-time look at our numbers, know exactly who is in our program to target our instruction, and makes us safer with its enhanced check-in and checkout features. We also work to share the importance of after-school programming with the broader community through storytelling via our monthly newsletter, social media, and the website. Another critical service that we provide is consistent, relevant, and quality professional development opportunities for our staff. In July, we held the Stealth Summit, where program leaders gathered for two days of professional learning and heard updates to program procedures. Throughout 2020, we also provided virtual bite-sized pieces of professional development called Stealth snippets that leaders could listen to at their own convenience. Topics included things such as family engagement during COVID-19, program sustainability, and more. Finally, in addition to these and general program support, we put together continuous quality improvement plans for our sites using achievement data and site visit observations, along with staff, student, and parent feedback to ensure that our program is functioning at the highest level and we can address any possible areas of concern before they become larger issues. As we look at potential opportunities for reapplication when grants end, this also gives us data we need to strengthen those applications. So what's next for Stealth? I'm pleased to be able to say that we were awarded funding this year to add two new sites to the Stealth program. You've heard me reference Anderson and Gordon Parks this evening, and they're the two newest sites in our program, and they are onboard and serving students this school year. I'm excited to let you know that after a hiatus last year due to COVID, we'll be back at Exploration Place for our Lights On After-School Celebration on April 12th. And I would invite you all to join us for this important celebration of after-school programming in our district and interact with our families. When we hosted this event in 2019, we had numerous families tell us how meaningful this opportunity was so that their families could participate. And finally, I invite you all to connect with Stealth to stay up to date with everything happening in our program. The three main ways you can do this are following us on social media. We're on Facebook and Twitter at the handle @WPSStealth. Visit our website, and while you're there, be sure to sign up for our newsletter, which goes out once a month with program updates and stories from across the program. And finally, we would welcome you to join us for a site visit. The best way to see what our program is all about is to come out and experience it for yourself. I'd be happy to help facilitate getting you out to one of these sites and seeing the program in action. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I am grateful for the opportunity to share about our program with you this evening, and thank you, Ms. Manning, for joining us.
Jennifer, my very first school visit after being on the Board of Education was to visit the Stealth program at Cleveland Elementary in October of 2017.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, and that seemed like ages ago, but that Stealth program still has an impact on me today. So please tell everybody, uh, we, we appreciate their efforts in this area. Cheryl?
Yeah, um, thank you very much for this presentation.
My pleasure.
People don't realize we have programs like this going on for our kids that literally extend the school day and the learning for students. Uh, my question is about the schools that are going to be finishing this grant. And you have talked about reapplying. How are they, is it possible for them to get a second round of this grant?
It is possible. We work with the building leadership to make sure that that is something that they want in their buildings and that their staff can, can support. Um, we don't want anybody getting burnt out, so that is a building-level decision. And then if they decide to reapply, that that is something they want in their building, we work with them through the grant-writing process.
Okay, and is the same process done to bring new schools on? Because I know you brought two on this year.
Yes.
So building principals have the option of talking with their staff and deciding if that's what they want to do?
That's correct.
Okay, how does this interact with other after-school kinds of things that we have going on in our buildings?
There are latchkey programs in some of our sites. They, they operate in completely separate areas, and we have some separate requirements. We're a little more academically focused than, than, say, latchkey, but both have a different and, um, important place. It's just a matter of what families need and what best fits.
And there's no funding cost for the parents for this program?
Correct, correct.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate hearing about the program.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ben?
Uh, yes, Ben Blankley, District One. I am, I'll also echo Stan in, in going on. A site visit to Stealth was one of the first things that I did on the board. And yeah, I would encourage community members to contact, uh, your office because it's, it's really cool. It's, uh, I think, I think the one that I went to was Culinary Arts, if I remember right. And, uh, and then in 2019, uh, my kiddo and I were able to go to the, uh, Lights-On for after-school. Um, and so we're going to definitely mark our calendars for April, so, thank you.
And Terry, I think, uh, I think you said it best. I mean, uh, the teachers are generally pretty excited about this program too, even though it's basically extending their, their workday. And could maybe you explain why, what is so different about Stealth that really gets them engaged?
I think sometimes getting to work with kids of different grade levels that they don't typically work with has been great. I've watched primary teachers working with fourth and fifth graders, and they're loving it. But they're also able to do a lot more science, which we don't have a lot of opportunity to do during the school day. And so there's a lot of hands-on work. The kids are having a ball. The teachers are having a ball teaching it. It's just, it's a really happy environment for all of them.
And it's not just sitting behind a desk, having a science lecture given to you. It's engaging.
You'll see them up and down the halls with robots running around, and they're outside in the gardens, and I, they're all over the place.
Thank you, Terry. Any other questions for the speakers? And this was a, a presentation for the Board information, and no action is, uh, necessary, necessary. But we do appreciate it, Jennifer and Terry. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item? Consent?
Ron, do you have any consent items to pull?
I have nothing.
Ernestine?
I have nothing.
Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One. I have nothing to pull.
Stan Reeser, District Four. I have no consent items to pull. Cheryl?
Cheryl Logan, At-Large. I have nothing to pull this evening.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District Two. Um, I would like to pull E5.
And that is the Bryant Opportunity Academy Storm Shelter Edition?
Yes.
Mia?
I have nothing to pull.
Ben Blankley, District One. I move we accept the consent agenda except for item E5.
I second that.
Moved by Ben and seconded by Ernestine. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, Julie, uh, item E5?
Yes, um, E5 is regarding, uh, architectural consulting services for a storm shelter addition at Bryant Opportunity Academy. And, um, I just, I just wanted to pull this item, uh, to, um, highlight it. During our bond issue program in the district, we provided what we called safe rooms or storm shelter rooms, um, at all of our attendance centers. We did that throughout the bond issue. However, at that time, Bryant, uh, was not open as an academic center. It was a facility that the district still owned, um, but we weren't utilizing at that time for student attendance. So consequently, uh, Bryant didn't receive a storm shelter. So I'm, uh, really pleased to see now this item on the agenda. I'm really pleased that we are going to move forward and provide this storm shelter at Bryant. We need, um, all of our kids in the district to be safe, and, um, we've always talked about that we had storm shelters at all of our academic sites. We need to have one at Bryant as well. So, um, I make a motion that we approve, um, this, uh, consulting services so that we can get started with, uh, design and engineering for the storm shelter. And then I anticipate at a future date, we'll see some construction bids for the project, so, um, I move we accept this item.
Seconded.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl. And Julie, I appreciate you, uh, uh, giving us the information on why this storm shelter is, is lagging behind. It was closed during that period of time, so it's good that we're getting caught up here. And we have a motion on the floor. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item? Under policy, Flight Four, Second Review, Proposed Consolidation of Learning Services Policies. Policy 1215, Administration and Organization of the School Program, Update in First Paragraph. Policy 1226, Guidelines for Scheduling Classes, Update to AIP Two. Policy 1450, School Age Programs, Updates to AIPs and Administrative Responsibility to the Elementary Office.
Is this the final, uh, yes, the final reading of this, of these? There were no questions about this last time. It, it was a cleanup of language. Uh, but if there's any concerns or discussion on about it today, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Ben Blankley, District One. I move to accept the proposed policy revisions.
I second.
Moved by Ben and seconded by Ernestine to approve the policy changes. That motion also carries seven zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item? Under Operations, East High School Science Wing. Dr. Thompson?
First, before I say anything, I'm going to, um, give a shout-out to, um, East High School. Um, I'm gonna give a shout-out to the Building Administrator and all of the staff at East. Um, East is a wonderful facility. It is beautiful. It is one of the most beautiful buildings we have in our city. Um, and, um, we know that it is important not only to, um, the students and families, but it's a community, kind of a pillar in our community. So, um, as we have this conversation, there's going to be a lot of, um, uncomfortableness that will happen for people at East High School, and we want to acknowledge that and let them know that we appreciate their ability to be able to be flexible, um, during this time. We're going to try to stay as close as we can to the Building Administration and team there. Anything that they need, all of the things that are going, the adjustments that they're going to need to make, we will try to be as accommodating, um, as the district can be. And I wanted to say that first and foremost. So again, thank you to East High School for all of your, um, accommodations and flexibility that you will, uh, endure during this time. Um, what is, what's going on at East? I'm going to let the smart people talk as specific and give you all of the specificities of it. However, um, there are some structural things that we need to work on at East High School. Um, and so we, um, are going to do this, um, fairly quickly in the, and, and move fairly quickly and try to do this as quick as we can so people can get back into their spaces. So with that being said, I'm trying to talk while they're trying to get the mics and things together. I think I have nothing else to say. So I am going to now turn it over to my colleagues so that they can use big words that I probably have to look up in a dictionary to know what they mean. But they will tell us exactly what's going to happen, um, and how it's going to happen, and, uh, move us in the direction to really give a wonderful space back and, and a good place for East High School.
All right, thank you, and I'll try to keep the big words to a minimum. Well, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Blankley, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the Board. Uh, my name is Luke Newman. I'm the Director of Facilities, and I'm here with, uh, Mr. Kenny Soldanya, our Director of Design and Construction. Uh, and we are here tonight, uh, to speak to you about some structural modifications that are needed at East High School and outline our plans to address it. Um, so over the past several years, we have made a concentrated effort to evaluate and restore the building's exterior. Uh, due to the substantial size, scope, and cost, we have taken a phased approach, uh, to addressing the need. When we got deeper into evaluating the Science Wing structure specifically, uh, we found some underlying issues that warranted further investigation. We hired a structural engineer that specializes in structural diagnostics to conduct a full-scale analysis. Uh, he concluded that there are, in fact, structural components that require correction, and as a precautionary measure, recommended that the Science Wing be vacated at the end of the current semester. Our Design and Construction Department, uh, prepared the 3D renderings that you see before you, which indicate the portion of the building impacted. To give you a brief overview of what our structural engineer found, uh, there is soil settlement that has slowly occurred over the years on the east end of the building that will require adding underground helical piers to stabilize. The roof supports require additional bracing, and the parapet stone walls above the roof need to be rebuilt. Uh, the exterior walls need additional lateral supports and anchoring. Uh, exterior brick requires tuckpointing, repair, and restoration. And lastly, there is some, uh, minimal concrete repair needed. So, in the interest of safety, we are taking the engineer's recommendation and vacating the Science Wing at the end of our current semester. There are eighteen science classrooms that are being displaced as a result. And the East High School sta- staff, as Dr. Thompson said, has done a great job, uh, creative, creatively problem-solving and freed up eight spaces inside of East High School. The other ten classes will be relocated to the B Building of WSU Tech's City Center Campus, located just south of East High School, as indicated on the map shown. Those spaces are currently being remodeled and will be ready for the teachers when they return from winter break on January 4th. And I'd like to take this opportunity just to give a huge shout-out to WSU Tech, Dr. Sherry Utash and her leaders over there. Uh, they've jumped through significant hoops for us, um, really on a moment's notice, and have even gone as far as to relocate instructional programs in order to give us enough space. It's been a great partnership and collaboration, and I just can't say enough, uh, to express the depth of gratitude that, that we have for them. So in conjunction with our efforts to prepare for relocating staff out of the Science Wing, we conducted a selection process to procure a qualified architectural firm in the, in the interest of getting them started on designing the structural remediation measures immediately. The selection committee received and evaluated five submissions and selected Schaefer Johnson Cox Frye Architecture, who's here tonight. Thank you. Uh, we estimate construction costs will be in the five to ten million dollar range, and capital dollars will be used to fund it. Okay, which brings me to the next part of my presentation. We typically use the design-bid-build-delivery method on construction projects, which Ms. Edrick is familiar with, uh, and this is the most common practice in the industry. Uh, under that method, the designer is the only active team member until bid documents are one hundred percent complete. The contractor doesn't come onboard until the project is put out for bid and awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. Sorry, lost my space here, my, my spot here. Um, we would like to request approval from the Board to proceed with an alternative project delivery method called CM@Risk on the East High School Science Wing project. We've had great success using this delivery method on both, both the east, or, uh, both the Southeast High School New Construction Project and the AMAC remodel, and believe there are some key advantages to using it that will greatly benefit this project. To start, it gives us the ability to select a general contractor early where they become an integral part of the team and provide critical input regarding constructibility, cost, and schedule throughout the design phase. This helps to ensure the project stays in budget and reduces the potential for change orders arising from constructibility concerns and unforeseen conditions. It also presents the opportunity to condense, uh, the project schedule by procuring long lead-time items early and accelerating critical path construction activities. This delever- delivery method will allow us to go through an interview, interview process to select the partner and team that we feel is best suited for the project and will give us more flexibility with subcontractor selection and provide, provide more transparent, open-book pricing. And lastly, with all key, key team members collaborating early, this method generally promotes a more cohesive project team than a typical design-bid-build approach would. So per state statute, the Board must consider, uh, five key factors when determining whether or not to approve the Construction Manager@Risk Delivery Method, which also called CM@Risk. So the first question is, will CM@Risk provide substantial savings of time or money? The answer to that is yes. CM@Risk will allow us to keep a closer eye on the budget as the scope develops, but more importantly, enables us to start construction sooner and save significant time on the overall schedule. The second question is, will the ability to overlap design and construction phases be advantageous to the project? Again, the answer is yes. Our hope is to have an early design package complete so we can get started on some critical construction components before the rest of the design documents, uh, are done. Third question is, is an accelerated schedule required to make repairs resulting from an emergency? Yes, this is a, a fairly obvious one. The sooner we can get them back into the Science Wing, the better. The fourth consideration is, do project phasing or technical complexities require integration of design and construction teams? The answer to this is yes. The scope will be complex and involve numerous constructibility logistics, which will be compounded by, by our current supply chain issues and shortages. The ability to have a contractor onboard early to help us work through the design issues, material availability, and scheduling will be invaluable. And the last question is, will the use of CM@Risk encourage favoritism or diminish competition? Answer to that is no. We will have a diverse selection committee involved in every step of the procurement process, and all qualified contractors for a project of this so, all local qualified contractors for a project of this size have the capabilities to deliver a CM@Risk project. So a quick rundown of our, uh, procurement schedule. Uh, the first step is to publish an intent to consider CM@Risk as your delivery method and to open it up for public comment at the next board meeting, which is what we're doing tonight. So that, uh, that was published on December 7th, and, uh, there were no registered speakers to speak on it tonight, so that checks both of those boxes. The next step is to publish our intent to issue an RFQ. So we can't actually issue the RFQ until that has been published and run for, and runs for fifteen days. So our intent is to then issue an RFQ, um, January 4th, immediately when we return from break. And that will be on, uh, out on the street. Uh, they'll have the opportunity to submit up until January 17th. Um, and then we will, uh, take a few days to evaluate the, the qualifications that have been submit, submitted and shortlist our contractors for interview. So we'll shortlist three to five. three to five CM contractor firms. And at that time, they will submit their, their fee proposals to the state. The state will score the fees. We will have no knowledge of those fees until we have scored their interviews and submit our final scores to the state, and they'll provide their scores on the, on the fee. And that's a way to make, make sure it's all above board, and we evaluate based on qualifications and interviews and all that, and then the fee is, is a secondary consideration. And the fee can't be more than 25% of the selection, of the selection consideration, I guess. So the next step after that will be to, we will come to you in beginning of February at the, at that board meeting with a recommendation for the CM firm, and we will be off and running at that point. And you won't see us again until probably around April or May, depending on the bid packages that we can get prepared. And I'll cover that a little bit more here in a minute. And that will be the point in which you approve the price, the guaranteed maximum price.
Julie?
Oh, sorry. I know I'm covering a lot here.
He can go ahead and finish his.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay. So the design and construction schedule, our, we're targeting May to have the design documents 100% complete. But we are hoping another advantage to utilizing the CM@Risk delivery method is that you can have them start work potentially a little bit sooner. And so we're really hoping that we can get some early bid packages complete, particularly for the helical piers, for some of that soil stabilization. I think it's enough of a separate scope of work that we could probably maybe accelerate that bid package while they're continuing to develop the final 100% complete design documents for everything else. And that would allow us to potentially start construction even sooner, maybe March or April. So that's why I say you might see us a little bit sooner than March or April if we're ready to release an earlier, an earlier package to the contractor to proceed. And all of this is being accelerated and pushed in the interest of trying to get them back into that building in the school year, in the 2022, 23 school year. Not going to put a hard date on, on that yet until we've had some critical conversations with our team members. But, but at some point in that school year, I anticipate we will definitely be getting back in. So that brings me to the recommendations. There are two recommendations, and then we'll open it up for questions. The first recommendation is, it is recommended, recommended that the board approve the, the construction manager at risk delivery method for the East High School Science Wing project. And then the second recommendation is that it is recommended that the board enter into a contract with Schaefer Johnson-Cox-Fry Architecture for design and engineering services on the East High School Science Wing project in amount not to exceed $550,000. And with that, I will open it up to questions, and I've got my colleague here to help me answer those as well. And apologize for taking up all the mic time, Kenny.
And I apologize for jumping in there. Julie?
Yeah, thank you, guys. I've been hearing about this project, and so I'm glad to get all the details and facts tonight. And I, first of all, want to echo Dr. Thompson's comments earlier because I have heard from some teachers talking about the challenge of trying to get the semester finished and grades in, and then also trying to get packed and moved. So I do also want to voice a word of appreciation to all of those teachers that are having to pull double, double duty here at the end. Yeah. Here at the end. So thank you, thank you to them. Second of all, I'm very pleased to hear that the plan is to keep the old building and to make repairs. You know, there were, I heard rumors flying around that we could potentially tear it down and start over, and I was, I was, I was not wanting us to go in that direction. So I'm very pleased about keeping the old building and, and doing repairs. And I'm very confident that with your design team and with your engineers, that they'll be able to make those repairs successfully, and we'll get a lot of years out of, out of the building in the future, and it'll be safe for our students. As far as your state statute and the CM@Risk considerations because of the fact that it is a unique delivery system and goes against the typical design bid, doing design work first and then taking competitive bids and approving the low bidder, I, I agree with you that you have accurately answered these questions, that there's a definite yes, 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 and then no. Also glad to hear that you're intending to work with local contractors. And this delivery system is definitely the way to go because of the need to have the substantial savings of time and the need to be able to work out the technical complexities with the design and construction teams. And I also, so I very much support and want to make a motion that we do approve the construction manager at risk delivery method for the project. And then lastly, I have total confidence and faith in Schaefer Johnson-Cox-Fry as they work on the design of this project. So I also want to make a second recommendation that we enter into a contract with Schaefer Johnson-Cox-Fry Architecture for the design and engineering services on the East High Project. So those are my comments. I will let others speak as well, but I'm.
Absolutely. But that was one motion, correct?
Yeah. And one motion, two recommendations.
Okay. Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District 1. To my understanding, East High is, is basically, pieces of it were built at different times. Is that correct?
Yes.
Like, some of them, like, there's a portion that was an entirely separate building at one point, way back in the day, and then they were connected at one time. Is this particular science wing essentially structurally separated from the rest of the building?
I think at one point, actually, when they, when, when they made some changes back in the bond, they had connected it to, and obviously that was before my time, but they had connected it to kind of that main entrance area on the south side of East High. So there was like a little addition that connected the two buildings. And Schaefer's here, they might be able to answer it better than I can. But, so that was actually a little separate, and that connected it. But I think that, does that answer your question and how it's?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I like this CM@Risk process. You mentioned long lead items being earlier, being able to be ordered earlier in the process, which I think is important. The critical path escalation, I'm very familiar with that in my line of work. So yeah, I definitely want to get that settled down. And also, it, there's a potential it might help in a skilled labor shortage because I know the materials and the processes we're working with, not, not, a lot of people are qualified to work on as, buildings as old and as naturally historic as ours are. So I, I agree that, you know, getting it started early is better. So to my understanding, based on your presentation, because of the internal moves and the space offered up by WSU Tech at their, at their B Building, we don't need portable classrooms for this project?
That's correct. We're, we're still going to evaluate, you know, once we get the construction timeline really ironed out and the contractor onboard, we'll be able to really have a better idea of, of, you know, what we're going to need through, you know, for how long, we're going to need some, some temporary spaces for them. So we're going to reevaluate just before spring break, and that'll give us enough time if we do determine we need to have portables. We, it'd give us enough time to get them out and installed and hooked up over the summertime before they return for the, for the fall. But I have every reason to believe that if we need B Building into next school year as well, WSU Tech's going to work with us and figure it out to where we don't need it. But obviously, we've still got eight teachers in East High, so we would need to find even more space for them in that building. So we'd have to get a little, little creative, but I'm optimistic we'll get it.
Okay. And that's all I have. Julia, I will second your motion that's on the floor.
A question.
Thank you. Cheryl first, and then Ernestine?
Okay. Thank you very much. Obviously, none of us would like, would, we're expecting this, none of us were expecting this. But the bottom line is, we have kind of taken lemons and making it into lemonade by moving our teachers around and, and being able to move as quickly as we can to get this redone and, and back into service. So I absolutely strongly recommend that we take these recommendations tonight. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Cheryl. And thank you, Ben, for seconding that. I was just about to ask if there was a second. So I appreciate you jumping in on that. Ernestine?
Just a question. So the, it is not safe to even use it for this semester, then?
It's, I wouldn't say it's not safe. We could probably stay in there longer. But just out of caution, you know, we really feel the best thing to do is to, to move them out of there now and just not, not risk it.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we have a workable plan, there's no need to take a risk.
Right. Exactly.
There is a motion on the floor. If there, well, let me ask if there's any last questions or comments. Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor by Julie, seconded by Ben to take the recommended action.
While we're waiting on the vote, I believe this is our oldest facility now that we, McCormick has gone to the retired teachers.
I think you're right.
Little USD 259 trivia.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for catching this construction problem we have and getting started on it as soon as possible.
And again, I just wanted to give another shout out. I'm just going to do it to East High and the faculty and staff there and the building administration. Thank you for what you're doing. We know this is definitely not what we wanted to do. And, but it's not, we don't have really a choice because no one would ask any teacher to do anything like this if it wasn't important that we do it. And you all have done it. And again, if we can come pack a box, I already told you, call me, I'll be there. Whatever we need to do to try to support, we will do. So thank you again to East High and the staff and faculty and administration there.
They've had several challenges at East this year, so kudos to East High.
Well, I will tell you, it's about the staff and the leadership. They're phenomenal.
I want to add a little trivia to East High.
Go ahead, Ernestine.
I graduated from East High with the largest graduating class ever at East High, and at the time, it was the largest in the United States.
Wow.
And our class, we actually used the B Building. My homeroom was in the B Building. And I represented and student council from the B Building.
Wow.
And now we go back, back around with the B Building. Thank you. That's all.
Circle of life. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Dr. Thompson?
I will be brief. I just want to, again, just kind of, well, just share with our staff in the district, everyone, that this has been a tough comeback from, from last year when our students weren't with us. It's been a tough haul. And, and on top of that, all the challenges of not having a substitute teaching staff. We're down in paraprofessionals. Everything that could have gone wrong did. It did. And we're working extremely hard to try to fill vacancies, and we're trying to come up with any and everything that we can do to try to ease the pain. And then you have other barriers that continue to come and expectations of us. And there really, sometimes there's really no grace given to, to us with the accountability that is expected of us. And we just kind of, and we're here to just continue to push on. So I, I'm just going to just say, I want you to go home over the break, close your eyes and rest, and reflect on, I did this before because, you know, sometimes you can get so many things that are on your list that are really bad, and then you just think to yourself, there is nothing good in life forever, or anything is good. And there was a smart person that told me to draw, get a piece of paper and to write out all the things that are going well, and then all of the things that are not going well, or in the things that I have no control over, and then to begin to reflect on that. I was really surprised at all of the things. I thought I was going to have a whole 10 pages of things that weren't going well, but really it was the opposite of things. And so I just want us to just go back to why we've come into this profession and why we do what we do, and to just dig a little bit deeper inside of ourselves. And I know we all have, you know, things that are going on with us, and we need, we need attention to. But I always just remember about my why, and it really gives me more energy than I thought I had when I think about the children that are depending upon us to be able to do the things that we do to be able to make them better. But I also know that we need our teachers and our staff to be strong too. And so again, as a system, we need to continue to listen to you. I know people say, well, you don't listen. But we will continue to listen about SRGs and everything that you all, that we're asking people to do. And we'll try to make the adjustments, but we still are being held accountable to improve the quality of learning for our kids every day. And so we have to do something different. But what that is and how we go about doing that, we'll just have to continue to listen and work together to see what we can do to make the best of the situation that we are in. And I know this district, I've been in here, the district for 30 years, and I almost was born in this district. Most of you know my story. My mother, my mother was having a baby, and it was me. Break, water broke in the middle of a classroom where she was teaching. And so, and that's a true story. So I was almost born in the Wichita Public Schools, and I have a lot of passion for the people in it, and, and for the organization as a whole. And I just want you all to know that I do love each and every one of you now. And I know you don't say, you know, you may not even know me, but I do love this organization and the people in it. And I want to do what's best for it, and I always will give 100% to that. So I want you all, again, to have a happy holidays, and I want you to rest, and I want you to draw all the things that are going, what's so, what's good about working for the Wichita Public Schools, and dig deep into those things, and let us continue to work on the things that are not so good about the school district. And let's work together on those things and not against each other because there's a lot of other forces that'll work against us, and we need to continue to work together so that we can do, be successful, both in our own personal lives and our own profession, as well as making sure that our kids are successful at will. We can both, we can have both of that if we work together instead of against each other. So thank you very much, and enjoy your holidays, and I'll see you on the other side in 2022.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I do want to give, I'll have Patrick announce the first next item.
Next item, under miscellaneous, Board of Education Reports and Requests.
And we'll take it in a slightly different option, order. I'd like to see the, the outgoing board members have a lot, chance to have the last words. So start with Julie.
Couple of reports that I want to make, talking about the great things going on in our district and the lemonade and bright spots. I had the opportunity to attend choir performances at Northeast Magnet in November, and then an orchestra, orchestra performances at Coleman here a week or so ago. And they were both fantastic. We have such talented kids in our district, such talented students. It's so fun to go and hear them perform. And so, so that was, that was fun to do and great talent. And then I want to also reflect on a visit that I had at Bryant, our, our school that we earlier approved the storm shelter at. Yeah. And so I had a, had a, had a visit and a tour at Bryant. I got to meet, meet and enjoyed some great kids. When I got there, they gave me tickets and said, if you see a child with good behavior, reward them with one of these tickets. And they used their tickets in a little store in the, in the school. And you know, I used up every single one of my tickets on good behavior that I saw on kids and just had some great interactions with the kids. And those teachers there are rock stars. So that's, that's my report. Good things going on in our district.
Thank you, Julie. Cheryl?
Yes. I, I just want to say one more time, I'm glad that we extended our strategic plan out because we see it working, we plan out because we see it working, we just need to give it a little more time and this allows us to do that before we reorganize and, and begin to look at those strategic goals again. I am going to greatly miss you, Mia and Ron and Ben. You've been great board members and we're going to miss you all. So thank you for your service and I second what the superintendent said. Adding, I want the same kinds of relaxing and reflecting and forgetting about the school district for a week or so to happen with our administrative team and staff as well, because you all also work very hard. Uh, our teachers are, are great and our staff is great and we all need a break and thank goodness it's coming soon.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ernestine?
I got an opportunity to see the Wichita District's Native American students act out uh folktales, Indian folktales. The, it was a partnership with the art, arts partners and it was so delightful and the kids were so talented and they managed to do it with one student being the narrator of the story and then the other students acting and acting out the parts. They were very clever. By the way, did you know that the crow once had a total coat, a rainbow colored coat and a beautiful singing voice? And um, there was, there was a tragic fire that, and so now the crow has a terrible voice, but as a reward, the crow no longer tastes good, so nobody hunts the crow. But it was, was a delightful thing. I want to also thank Mr. Lewis of the UTW, United Teachers of Wichita. That was such a gracious thing. He started this meeting with, thanking the, the board and I want to thank the teachers for thanking us because sometimes we can feel like we're adversarial, but we're not and I was so grateful that, that the teachers know that we're not adversarial, that we're really on their side and that we're with the kids and we're with the families and we're, we really are doing this because of what we believe about the importance of our children need to have a good education in a safe and creative environment. I just thank the staff and all of your administrative staff, Dr. Thompson. What a talented bunch we have. I really, I wanted to tell you that somebody who went to see the program on the career program on, uh, at North High, that someone's comment was, outside comment was, I just thought that that was an abandoned building. And they found out that they were doing not only creative things of, with automobiles, but building airplane parts. And the comment that somebody said is, why doesn't the city know this? Why don't we know this? That's really exciting that Wichita, and we really are ahead of the game. We are making models of how to educate kids for the rest of the whole Midwest.
And it's not airplane parts, they're building an airplane. Then they're going to sell that airplane and it is going to fly.
In that sense.
It's already sold, by the way, yeah.
That's just incredible. Well, that's just, I really, you all know me, my slogan, he that tooteth not his own horn, get his own horn not tooteth. I really want to recommend that we see if there are not some companies in the community that would help to um fund some billboards so we don't have to use a single dollar that ought to be for kids to advertise how good we are or how, what these programs are, but that there are some community uh companies out there that probably would be happy to do that because that would, um, anyway, that's the end of my speech.
Thank you, Ernestine. Um, I just want to say, uh, I wanted to thank Mia and Ben and Ron for your service on this board for the last four, or years or, or less. Um, you know, in the end, all we have is our name, uh, whether you're one of the Koch brothers and have billions and billions, or whether you're Stan Reeser and have, well, I won't go into what my income is. At dollars, nickels and nickels. Let's just say there's a difference between uh my first example and me. Um, the, at the end, uh, you're going to die with just your name. And you chose to put your name on the ballot. I did not come out the way some wanted, but others did. Uh, I look forward to making new friends, but regardless of that election, I have three new friends that I look forward to staying in touch with. And your legacy is that you served this board with honor and integrity. And your name is not, when your name gets put in a newspaper article, there will not be a comma afterwards saying, and then there'll be a scandal underneath it. Your name is clear and clean and you did it with integrity and honor and you did it uh in a outstanding way. And your fam, yeah, and your family will know that, your friends will know that. And uh, the best thing about this is that uh our friendship is not over. We look forward to making new friends, but this friendship is not over and we look forward to staying in touch with you and we know you will stay in touch with the Wichita Public Schools. Patrick, next item? Oh, I'm sorry. Now, now let's give, I'd like to give the three uh out, um, members to uh have a chance to say their final words. Does anyone want to go first or? Mia, do you want to go first?
I'm going to go first.
Okay.
Again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. Um, I promised myself um at the beginning of this year that I would do something that I'd never done, step outside my comfort zone and I will have to say this is one of the biggest things that I did, but I, I met some wonderful people, not just here, but out in the community, uh, met some great teachers and some principals. I met some kids, uh, so it's been a great experience for me and I, I have no, no sadness about this. This is life and um I feel braver now thanks to you guys, so thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Ron?
Yes, thank you. Uh, going back to the report, I just want to say.
We're still on the report.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to say thanks to uh Colonel Hester for putting on a really great Veterans Day uh celebration and um, you know, he's been uh really an advocate for just highlighting those kind of things and uh, as a former vet, you know, I just, I really appreciate what he's done with that uh program. Uh, the other thing is kind of going with, uh, what Dr. Thompson was talking about, yeah, it's been a rough year, you know, in, in the teaching profession. And I would say there, you know, seeing the students that we saw earlier, you know, there are a couple of things that they did and I always tell a lot of the students and parents is that, uh, basically a couple of things are show up and get the work done. That means you got to behave and you got to show up for school. And you know, that's, it's a challenge right now, you know, for a lot of students and so you, you'd be surprised how big of a difference that makes in a classroom, you know, by having uh the students that are, they're making good choices throughout the day. So anyway, again, I really appreciated everything that I experienced and learned throughout these last four years and yeah, looking forward to seeing what's next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One. Um, it wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't say the school events that I went to in the prior month. Unfortunately, uh, my family had a little bit of a COVID hiccup uh these last few weeks and so we weren't able to do as many activities as we wanted to. I was able to go to the algebra one slash math eight math academy at the ISC. Media Services did a great little three, four minute video on it that's up on the uh district YouTube page. You can go find out about how our middle school and our high school math teachers are collaborating to make sure that handoff of knowledge is working better. Um, and I did want to apologize to Ms. Lennox, the instructional coach at Washington Elementary. She reached out to ask if I could participate in their winter read day this week on December 16th, but I have another board obligation um that day, um, so I'm unable to attend that, but I would have otherwise. I want to give a, a nice uh shout out to all of the, all the kids and all the schools that are doing spirit weeks and pajama days. Uh, you only have a couple of days left before winter break, so that's super exciting. I know my kiddo has got his pajamas all ready to go. Um, in 2017, the only people who recognized me at Dylan's were the insomniacs. The people who watch public access television at three in the morning. Um, now, uh, it's a lot more people, um, and it's, it's, it's a little weird um to kind of be stepping out of this role of, of advocacy and elected officialdom. But I'm going to continue that advocacy. Uh, I'm going to be a champion of our public schools always. Um, not only because uh I have a kid in the system and so I am bought into the success of the district um entirely, uh, but I also work for the largest employer in our city that ninety percent of our employees come from the Wichita Public Schools. And so the success of our public school system directly affects the success of the biggest employer in our city. Um, and I think that, that can't be overstated. Um, and so we all have a role in making sure we have strong, essential public schools, um, educating all of our kids. Um, and so I'm going to be, continue to be the squeaky wheel as needed. Um, I was kind of a squeaky wheel this last 18 months and before that it was a squeaky wheel on other issues and so I'm going to continue to, to, to raise issues that I think are important um in the public sphere and uh in regards to our public schools. And then of course, uh, COVID vaccinations, if you haven't gotten vaccinated, just get vaccinated. Um, and if your kids aren't vaccinated, just get them vaccinated because I can tell you, my kid had his second COVID shot in his arm and then he was a household close contact. And if it happened two weeks later, he could have been in school for the last two weeks, but because he was a COVID close contact and unvaccinated at the time, he had to stay home for this whole time period. Now, he's a smart kid, he's, he'll bounce back quickly, but our community rates are still going up. We're basically as bad now as we were a year ago and this time we got shots. So get your shots in your arms, stay in the game, don't get benched because you're close quarantine. Five million American kids so far between the ages of five and 11 have been vaccinated in the United States already, five million. CDC director said today that they have had zero reports of serious side effects in those kids. So for those that are worried about side effects, my kid had a sore arm for a day. That was it. Anyway, he's back playing. So now that he's fully vaccinated, if he gets another close contact, he's still in school. Consider it, it's worth it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business?
Seeing, seeing no new business, moving on to next item?
I was like, wouldn't it be funny if I brought up new business?
Yeah, that would.
Yeah, that, deal with it.
Yes, that would be hilarious, Ben. Patrick?
Next item, adjournment?
Ben Blankley, District One, I move to adjourn.
Cheryl Logan at large, I second.
And um, as we're taking this vote to adjourn, our next board meeting uh will be January Motion carries seven zero, we are adjourned.